This conference will now be recorded.
Kind of went a little bit faster, didn't I? Today is Wednesday, June 28th, 2023, and I'd like to call in today's work session to order. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Boyle?
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Leha?
Present.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Here. All right, thank you, clerk. Tonight, we do have a presentation. Please welcome Commander Todd, and hopefully I don't butcher this, Todd. Barsness?
Perfect, nailed it.
All right, from the Clark County Sheriff's Office, who will be discussing Clark County Sheriff's Office Police Services. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I know the initial presentation indicated this would be given to you by Chief Mike McCabe. He's taken sick, so he's asked me to step in for him tonight. So I want to begin by thanking you for taking the time to be here tonight, to listen to our presentation. We'd like to start off, at some point, I'll be introducing some of my support team here, going to help answer some of the questions that we may be able to discuss tonight. I think we've got, what, about 300, 320 slides? So we should be out of here about 10 or so, I think. No. To be really honest with you, we'd love to give you a flavor of who the Sheriff's Office is, the types of service and the framework that we can provide. And I'd really like to have this as a discussion. So if you have questions along the way, if you have things that are really important, please make sure that you ask. So we'll go ahead and get started with a message from Sheriff John Horch.
Hello, and greetings to the La Center City Council, Mayor, and all the residents of La Center. As the Sheriff of our county, I am responsible for protecting and safeguarding our community. Over the past few years, the La Center Police Department has experienced a dramatic decline in staffing. I believe now is a good time for the Sheriff's Office to partner with La Center and bring back the police services and protection you have enjoyed over the years. We are committed to providing a service that gives the La Center community ownership of the officers who will patrol the area and to keep your families safe. To the best of our ability, we will tailor our services to fit your community's needs and expectations. I am confident we can build a partnership that evokes a sense of pride within the La Center community and the North Clark County area. Professional, well-trained, and service-minded law enforcement officers are what you will receive from the Sheriff's Office. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to call me or any of my executive team. Thank you again for your time.
Sheriff's Office is based off of three fundamental principles. Our vision, which is to make Clark County as safe and livable as possible, and have the Clark County Sheriff's Office be the most professional and sought-after sheriff's office to work for in our state. Our mission statement is very simple: to protect and safeguard our community. Our team promise is to encourage employee engagement, be authentic with staff, hold ourselves accountable, be mindful of our employees' wellness, support meaningful communication, and foster a one-team mentality.
I just need a note for the record that Councilmember Boyle is with us now.
Oh. Our values. Clark County Sheriff's Office is a nationally accredited Washington State Full Service Law Enforcement Agency. Sheriff's Office is committed to providing superior law enforcement services in a manner that builds public confidence and improves the quality of life in our community. We value hard work, dedication, and a commitment to service. We value teamwork throughout the agency, branches, and individual work units. We value a healthy balance between work, family, and community, and we value personal integrity and human dignity. Individually, our deputies make up multiple different work units, from our executive management team, our SWAT team, Traffic Homicide Unit, Drug Task Force, Tactical Detective Unit, Major Crimes Unit, Fraud Investigations, Domestic Violent Unit, Unmanned Aerial Units, Evidence Unit, Community Outreach, Honor Guard, K-9, Marine Patrol, Specialized Civil Units, Child Abuse Investigations, Crisis Negotiation, Civil Unit, and Criminal Records Unit. Our individual deputies have a typical call load. It amounts to about 1,000 calls for service a year, and of that 1,000, about 10% of those evolve into actual cases. A case would be any call that requires follow-up, additional research, additional effort, more than just could be handled on a single visit or a single contact. Each deputy writes an average of about 20 citations a year. That was closer to 45 pre-COVID, and makes at least 10 arrests a year, which, again, was about 20 pre-COVID. Our county service area is divided into geographical beats, and the workload in those individual beats. The goal there is to provide 24-hour coverage 365 days a year. In order to do that, it's recommended that we have six to seven officers assigned to each beat or work district, with six officers provide the minimum staffing. And the way that breaks down is that we have an A-side and a B-side. We have a revolving schedule with four on and four off, so we'd have a day swing and grave on one side and a day swing and grave on the other. The seventh officer allows for seamless continuity of coverage for illness, vacation, training, or critical incident leave. It also provides coverage for when officers are waiting to be hired at the academy or being trained. La Center current area and statistics. Currently, the city of La Center generates about 4,000 calls for service a year. Pre-COVID, 67% of those calls were officer-initiated, meaning they were not necessarily response to a call as much as self-initiated activity by an individual officer. The most common types of calls were traffic stops or premise checks, and it evolved, again, about the same ratio, 10%, into actual cases that required additional follow-up. And the most common types of cases were traffic and theft. This is a breakdown, and I think it's easier to see in the handouts that you have, that the numbers are important in and of what they represent, which means your typical traffic safety contact by an officer in the city of La Center in 2019, about 70% were done or were cleared with a verbal warning. About 14%, an actual citation or notice of infraction was issued, and the remaining 12% were either a written warning or it wasn't recorded in the system. So, again, the important thing there is about 75% of the time, the subject was educated versus given an infraction.
Commander, did you give the kid a warning there, verbal, or was it written?
I think that's my kid, actually. So if we compare that with traffic safety to the Sheriff's Office in 2022, although the numbers are obviously going to be different, the actual percentages remain almost identical. 70% of the time, a verbal warning was issued, and about 9% of the time, a citation was issued. So the goal of these slides isn't necessarily to talk about numbers as much as mindset and philosophy of our deputies versus the officers here in La Center. Sheriff's Partnership Program. Our partnership program provides the framework and options around which the city of La Center can tailor its own police department to suit its own local priorities and budget goals. Police staffing levels, crime emphasis, and proactive community programs are all determined entirely by the city. The benefit is gained by leveraging economies of scale with the Clark County Sheriff's Office Patrol, Investigation, and numerous specialty services. The goal of that partnership program is improved level of service to the citizens, increased affordability to the taxpayers, decreased response time, solve common problems with established resources, reduce liability for the city, and retain control over the services delivered. The partnership program would create a new shared beat for law enforcement coverage to include the city of La Center and the surrounding area. The new beat would be staffed with eight deputies and one sergeant. La Center would reimburse the Sheriff's Office for the ongoing cost of six deputies and one sergeant, plus a support position in records. In the proposed La Center District, officers would consider the city limits of La Center to be their primary patrol area and responsibility. Officers would be call-responsive to the area described by the map to assist other units, but after responding to the call, officers would return to the city limits to continue their regular patrol duties. Continued current practice with mutual aid response to assist other agencies when requested and available. While the on-call responsive areas would be larger, the call volume is appropriately sized for the planned deployment of officers as the residential and commercial services areas grow. This map represents that proposed La Center service area with the city of La Center highlighted in purple. This proposed beat typically receives 5,300 calls for service a year. Pre-COVID, 53% of those calls were officer-initiated, and the most common types of calls were traffic stops and premise checks. And again, we have that same 10% ratio with about 500 of those calls generating an actual case. And the most common types of cases were traffic and theft. The La Center development at the junction. I-5 at Exit 16 development with the convenience store, lodging, restaurant, and retail space, the positive economic impact to the city and the local area. The result will also be an increase in calls for service for police officers. Common types of calls would include theft, vehicle prow, vehicle accidents, assaults, all resulting in an increased caseload. These statistics were pulled from some of the local area hotels along the I-5 corridor, and you can see, the brand name doesn't really matter. It's more the location and the cost per room that actually affect the number of calls. But on an average, those five different hotels average about 150 calls for service a year. Impacts of Managed Growth. It's going to allow an opportunity to align resources and focus on efforts towards continued safety of the community, leveraging assets and strengths to prepare for increased call loads for service and related caseload, and the implementation prior to growth allows for the continual assessment of needs and sustained success. If we talk about the patrol services, the Sheriff's Office would provide law enforcement services within the city of La Center, rendering such services in the same manner and with the same equipment as customarily provided the Sheriff's Office in unincorporated Clark County. Police patrol services shall constitute the first response for the enforcement of state law and the city of La Center criminal, traffic, and civil infraction ordinances. Patrol services shall include reactive patrols to respond to calls for service from residents and businesses, proactive patrol to prevent and deter criminal activity, and traffic control to enforce applicable state traffic codes. The Sheriff's Office will provide law enforcement services within the city of La Center, rendering such services in the same manner and with the same equipment as... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. The Sheriff's Office will assign fully-commissioned deputy sheriffs to the newly-created La Center beat. These deputies will be dedicated to addressing the law enforcement needs of the city of La Center by performing patrol, investigative, or special services within La Center beat, under the supervision of a Sheriff's Office sergeant or the sergeant assigned as La Center Chief of Police. As such, the city of La Center will have a dedicated supervisor located within La Center as a point of contact to pass along information, address concerns, and obtain statistical information. And I'd like to point out that that sergeant will be fully authorized to work directly with the city to make deployment, strategy, and resource allocations as needed. So that individual sergeant would be the primary point of contact. That sergeant would then report back to the Sheriff's Office Administration, but the city would have a single point, a single face, a single name, who would be empowered to make whatever decisions in partnership with the city of La Center was needed. Both the Sheriff's Office and the city of La Center will benefit from the use of existing police department facility by Sheriff's Office deputies assigned to patrol the city of La Center and Sheriff's deputies assigned to patrol the surrounding unincorporated Clark County. The Sheriff's Office may, with the permission of the city of La Center, identify those deputies or vehicles providing services to the city of La Center under this agreement with special markings or other means of identification. The Sheriff's Office is 100% open to any discussion with the city of La Center as far as uniforms, patches, vehicle markings, building markings. The goal of this is a partnership with the city of La Center. We want to represent the community in partnership. It's not a takeover. It's not a Sheriff's Office is now here and La Center is out. It is a 100% partnership that's going to be driven by the city of La Center. And all deputies will be assigned and utilize body-worn cameras and vehicle-mounted in-car camera systems. The funding and the operational costs associated will be managed by the Sheriff's Office. We are midway through that process right now and hope to have our body cam system deployed this fall. So that will be something that will be part of this package. The patrol service, part of the partnership program, the deputy sheriffs assigned to the La Center beat will work shifts described under the Deputy Sheriff's Collective Bargaining Agreement that ensure a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage with overlapping shift for peak coverage, typically during swing shift hours. Existing contracts would be utilized for other services, such as vehicle and derelict camper removals, not being billed to the city of La Center. We already have those contracts in place. We would simply utilize them within your city limits at our cost. Deputies reside in local Clark County areas and have relationships, experiences, and ties to the local community. Investigative Services. Investigative Services shall consist of criminal investigations by deputies and detectives investigating all detected and reported crimes, which are customarily provided by the county in the surrounding unincorporated portions of Clark County. I'm sure many of you are aware, even when La Center had an active and involved police department, we still partnered with the city of La Center on major crimes, traffic homicides, or major collisions, any sort of large investigations, where routinely partnered with the city of La Center to complete those. The Sheriff's Office will process, maintain evidence, and destroy property collected as a result of investigations occurring within the city of La Center in the same manner used for the Sheriff's Office investigations occurring within the unincorporated areas of Clark County. Situations that require the use of specialized equipment and team tactics, everything from SWAT call-outs, K-9, Marine Patrol, Drug Task Force, would all be handled by our own trained services. And again, these are all services that have been partnered with the city of La Center for years and years. Based off the trained personnel, established practices, and valuable experience, the Sheriff's Office has already requested to these incidents on a regular basis in the community. The Sheriff's Office will provide support services that include planning and research, subpoena control, training, accounting, payroll, personnel, labor relations, media relations, fleet management, purchasing, risk management, internal investigations, at no additional charge to the city of La Center. The Sheriff's Office will provide record management services to the city of La Center and shall maintain, archive, and destroy records in accordance with the State of Washington's Secretary of State Record Retention Schedule. All of that will be managed by the Sheriff's Office. The city would no longer be responsible for training, use-of-force complaints, public disclosure requests, media inquiries, critical incident management, property and logistic issues, evidence storage, internal affairs investigations, new state mandates and laws, labor negotiations, law enforcement risk management, and body camera implementation and management. All of those would then be handled by the Sheriff's Office. So at this point, there's lots of numbers on the screen. So I'm going to ask one of my partners, Darren Rouyay, to come up here and talk to you about some of the financial aspects.
Well, good evening. So initially, the discussion around this partnership, it actually began years ago, and I remember working out the first set of costs about two years ago. What we're going to look at today is two slides that show, firstly, the one-time costs that come when the capacity is added, and then the ongoing cost, probably billed quarterly as we move forward. So I've updated the costs to show what they would cost for 2023. So this is going to be pretty accurate for what the center could see once we reach full implementation. So what this first slide is showing is the one-time cost. So when we add a sergeant, for example, that's the second, or the first one on the list there, we need to do a recruitment. The sergeant is going to be replaced by a deputy who gets promoted up. And so this reflects the one-time cost of basically replacing or adding that sergeant. So it's not only the cost of recruiting and hiring the sergeant, but the cost of the vehicle they'll drive, all their equipment, so all the things to equip and prepare a sergeant to hit the field. Same thing is true with the deputies. Those come in pairs. And so it's envisioned that we would first start out in the implementation by adding from the top down a support position and then a sergeant, and then another pair of deputies, a second pair of deputies, and then finally a third pair of deputies over successive periods of time. How long that takes depends on staffing availability and the transition plan itself. So looking at these costs, what we see on a one-time basis is the sergeant, the one-time cost would be 165. That would trigger, when we deploy that first sergeant and they become responsive to La Center, is that one-time cost would be billable, as well as the beginning of the ongoing cost, which is quartered. We'll see that on the next slide. But to finish this slide, for each deputy, or pair of deputies, excuse me, that is added, we would then, it would be billable for 330,000. Again, that'd be the cost of two vehicles, the cost of two recruitments, two academy training processes through the state, and all of that. So these chunks would come onboard over time. If somehow we could do it, and this would all be instantaneous, which is one way to look at it, all of this would be billable right up front. And then flipping to the next slide, this is the ongoing cost. So at some point, the one-time cost will be done with that, and we'll be left with just the ongoing cost. The ongoing cost, again, for the support specialist would start in the first year at 86,500. Again, depending on when that starts, that would be prorated for whatever portion of the year we're talking about. The next chunk of capacity, which would happen, I think, pretty early, would be the sergeant. So on the ongoing basis, that's 235,500 per year. Again, on a quarterly basis, that would be billable. So right out of the chute, if we deployed those, you just look on the one-time sheet, how much one-time would be billable, and then beginning the quarterly payments of the ongoing. Sometime later, could be three months, six months, depends on the transition plan. The first pair of deputies would be deployed. Again, there, the ongoing cost of those is roughly $200,000 per officer, or $400,000 for the pair. That $369,000 figure there should match the other 402 figures. That's a typo. The next two, the 402, 600 is the correct number. On a quarterly basis, it's $100,000 per quarter for each pair. That is actually correct on the slide. So again, if we could snap our fingers and make this all implemented instantaneously, the first-year cost on an ongoing basis would be just shy of $1.5 million. And the one-time cost would be about 1.15. So on an ongoing basis, the 1.5 in the first year, again, it's going to take many, probably many months, quarters, to implement it fully. But there's envisioned a 4% escalation factor for the first five years, so you have some certainty around what your costs would look like for budgeting purposes. So you would only pay for the chunks of capacity when they come online for you. So if the first pair of deputies is deployed six months out, that's when they would be billed. The next pair, six months out, that's when they would be billed. And then each year, a 4% escalation factor would be added. And then in five years, I think the proposal was we revisit that to see if we need to true that up. Sometimes there's bigger adjustments that need to be accounted for, either at the state retirement system or something else. Okay? So one thing I would add to what Commander Barsness said about the costs is one other thing that is included in these costs is overhead, which includes general liability. So lawsuits and whatnot that come to bear through the police actions of the Sheriff's Office fulfilling this contract would, again, be the responsibility of the Sheriff's Office. And so the overhead is the mechanism by which we factor that cost into the contract. I can need to take questions now, or do you want to wait till then? All right, thank you.
So this timeline represents, again, a general framework that allows for annual reviews of the contract, the service program, and any sort of changes that the city of La Center may be interested in incorporating into the contract.
I understand the good that law enforcement can do, because it's not just enforcing the law and taking people to jail. We have a large effect on people, and we can guide people in the right direction. We can actually really make a difference, really help people out here.
I really like to help people. This job gives me the opportunity to do that every day. It's a pretty big challenge, but for me, it's been one of the most rewarding things I've ever done.
I don't get the satisfaction from this job from taking people to jail. My satisfaction from this job is actually helping people with what they seem to think is the worst time in their lives, which in most cases it is. This might be the only time they call the police in their entire lives, and I want to make sure that they, you know, feel comfortable, feel safe, that I'm taking care of that problem for them, to where I can put their mind at ease and let them know that, hey, I can take care of this for you.
So to close, I'd like to emphasize that this proposal truly is a partnership. And the material that you've been presented tonight and that you have in front of you is a very generalized framework. The Sheriff's Office is more than willing to discuss and partner with the city of La Center on any part, aspect, or term of this contract, whether it's uniforms and equipment, the hours of operation, the reporting structure, the length of the contract. We truly believe that we are providing a service to La Center, and as the end user, you should be telling us what services you want and how you want them provided. So with that, Chief Mike McCabe is not here, but I would love to answer whatever questions I can for him.
Your current recruitment process, has that been successful? I know nationwide, everyone's struggling. How are you guys situated?
Well, like any problem, once we master one, we discover another. So we have gotten very good with our recruitment. We found the channels that work and the channels that don't. We focused energy where it needs to be focused. The challenge now is not necessarily recruiting and hiring, it's getting our deputies through the academy. We currently have 22 employees that are pre-attending or post-academy. So the hiring process is going really, really well. We are now partnering with the state. I'm sure you've heard about our regional academy efforts. We're hoping to have that regional academy up and running by January of next year. So that's going to significantly help that process and speed those deputies through the process.
Okay. And within that recruiting process, have you increased your focus on recruiting a more diverse collection of officers?
Yes, very much so. When I was hired with the Sheriff's Office 29 years ago, it was not the same Sheriff's Office that we have today. We're getting close to 30% female on our workforce. The diversity in cultures, backgrounds, experiences, ages, it's an amazing assortment of people that we're bringing into this field now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I was noticing on one page, it talked about eight, bringing on eight officers and one sergeant, and when we have an A side and a B side, and then there's a swing shift, so that's a F and G side or whatever, and then the graveyard is C D. So obviously, we can't immediately have enough to spread out for all of those different positions. So we just have to, I know it'd be a gradual thing.
Yes, it would be a slow walk into the pool, so to speak. Obviously, we would prioritize the 24-hour coverage. So the sergeant and the first two deputies would probably be assigned to day shift. The next two deputies, graveyard. So now we have our 24-hour rotation. And then as we continue to add deputies based off the contract and the stipulations there and our resources, we can begin to fill in the swing shift, because now we currently have an early swing and a late swing. So we actually have four different shifts that we currently staff in order to better manage our resources. But here regardless, we would still be within, as a beat within the county, you would have response from the Sheriff's Office West Precinct, from deputies who are working. So if we had a call that required more than one deputy to respond, we would have those assets and resources, much like we do right now when we're responding to calls within the City of La Center.
Okay, and they would be stationed, literally stationed, at our police department here?
Yes.
The assigned ones?
Yes, one truly important aspect of this is that we represent the community, and we have a presence in the community. We want the public to know that they have a place where they can go, and they can make contact with the Sheriff's Office, whether it's to file a report or to express a concern about something that they've seen or experienced. We want to be a part of this community. So yes, those officers, those deputies who will be working, the La Center beat, will be working out of the La Center station.
Okay.
What about any costs that are needed to make the La Center Police Department facility usable? Because what we know, it's not, is that, because I don't see that as part of the upfront cost, it's nothing to do with infrastructure. So has that been considered? Because obviously, we've just heard, you know, obviously, that's missing a lot of key components, especially female quarters and so forth, and...
I'm sure that that would be part of the eventual contract. I couldn't begin to tell you what those costs would look like. I recently had an opportunity to meet with the police chief and take a look at the facility, and it is, it's a great building for what it is, but you're right, there are some improvements that would be needed, and I'm sure that's something to be negotiated between the county and the city.
Okay. And then at that point, it sounds like we wouldn't have a chief then, we would just be operating with our offices out here, and that main sergeant, and the chief would obviously be in Vancouver, and we wouldn't have that position here? Is that how I understand it?
Well, so what we had originally envisioned was that that sergeant would be the acting chief.
Sure, that's kind of what I thought. Yeah, but I didn't know if that was the right wordage to say that they would be, because they don't have that title, so I don't know.
Well, and again, that's...
But technically, the job description would be, right, is, would be those duties.
Yes, would be those duties, and their sole function would be operation and logistics for the City of La Center.
Because I'm guessing, is it kind of like, you know, they're paid, and how they're paid on a scale is based on their classification somewhat?
Yes.
And how they've, yeah, so that's just a different pay structure, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So a sergeant would be assigned two days on A side and two days on B side, so he would be there for both squads on both sides?
Again, completely open to whatever the City of La Center feels best. We can certainly do that where we bridge both sides so that that sergeant has contact with both sides, or we can assign that acting chief position to a Monday through Friday so that they are more readily available to the council or the mayor for cooperation and communication. When we don't have a hard stripe on duty, then we would have a West Precinct sergeant available for any concerns, issues. It would flow exactly like our current Western Central Precincts operate, where one sergeant's available. If another sergeant is tied up on a call or is absent, that other sergeant is empowered and trusted to make those decisions, so.
Good.
You would never be without a sergeant or a supervisor on duty 24/7.
Normally, the mayor does more questions. Oh, go ahead. Sean has a question. Perfect.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Hi, this is Councilmember Boyle. I just wanted to say, I honestly don't, you answered pretty much all. I looked at the slideshow previous, and I don't really have a lot of, I don't have any negatives to say right now. I just want to say that I like the return to response after, you know, they would get called off, they're going to return back to La Center after their response. Special markings, I think that's a great additive, if that's a possibility to add that. I think it brings the community back in to, you know, make it feel like we have our own police back in La Center again. I don't think that's absolutely required, but it definitely, you know, brings that community feel back in and puts people at a little bit of ease that they know who's going to be in the city, working, they can, you know, gain relationships with them, you know, et cetera, et cetera, as far as that goes. There, obviously, like you said, I know we see lots of, there's ties to local community within your, the sheriffs that are working for you guys, we see their cars all the time. And lastly, I just think the numbers are pretty transparent and appear to be desirable. I think that you guys did a great job of presenting, and I just want to say thank you for, you know, coming out here and doing this for us tonight.
You're welcome, Councilmember. I appreciate those. Yeah, and I know it probably did not come out in the handouts or the, and it's a little difficult to see, but our Photoshop master not only put the markings on the current building, but also on the backs of the Tahoes, is the same La Center community partnership, which I could tell you the sheriff was very supportive and encouraging in order to cement that bond. And this type of arrangement isn't new or unique. It's new or unique in Clark County, but the City of, or King County does it with multiple different smaller agents out there, and depending on that individual jurisdiction, some of them allow the King County deputies to wear their standard uniform, some of them prefer they wear a completely different uniform, sometimes they wear the King County uniform with an individual community's patch or designation. And again, we are completely open to whatever the City of La Center would prefer in that regard.
I would like to make...
When I think that is all, sorry, I'm going to jump in just because I'm on here now, but I would just like to say that I think that Clark County sheriffs, they resemble a staple within all communities in Clark County, and they're respected, and people know that they're, they gain a sense of security by seeing, you know, a Clark County sheriff vehicle, and whether it has La Center on it or not, I mean, I think that that's just an additive, in my opinion, and I appreciate you guys being willing to, you know, differentiate and make it, you know, make La Center feel like we're actually being taken care of individually.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make the comment that, yes, we're not, the Sheriff's Office is not the same as it was 30, 35 years ago when I started, but I have to say, even back then, the Sheriff's Office did, I thought, great strides for that era of bringing in, they brought me in as an older female, and they really did work on diversity way back then, and we had lots of training every year on diversity. So the county, I have a lot of praise for how the county operates, and there is one question I have though, because the attrition rate was always pretty high, and has there been anything to, you know, steps to kind of change that? And I know that for a while there, the county was being way underpaid compared to other agencies, so that might play into it.
Yes, and, you know, again, one problem solved leads to another problem discovered. When we start to hire, then the focus has to transition to retention. What are we doing to retain our employees? And the Sheriff's Office is in a unique position in that we can not only offer an incredible variety of types of jobs, everything from Marine Patrol, K-9, unmanned aerial systems, that detectives and, we have a variety of different positions to keep people interested in the long term, but as of the beginning of this year, the Deputy Sheriff's Guild signed a very impressive contract. The county and the Deputy Sheriff's Guild worked very closely to make them very competitive in the region. So we do have some things really going for us in retention. We're still going to lose people to retirement, but we have really slowed that down with this new contract, and as we start to refill our ranks and we reopen some of those positions that were temporarily closed or reduced, it's really bringing out a lot of pride internally in the agency, and it's really helping with the morale and retention.
Yeah, I was really glad to hear that, that they got, now got raises that represents really what they should be being paid.
Yes. Thank you.
So something that was presented to Chief Richardson and I in private was a 90, a good faith clause, correct? Wasn't that what they called it? 90 days, it was a 90-day good faith clause.
That was something like, we could talk about that when we do our contracting, but one of the things we had is if something comes up with her, and I think we had this discussion with the sheriff, that if, let's say the volcano blows up and you guys can't man La Center, then you give us notice that there's an emergency, we can't do that, and then at the other end, if we have some kind of emergency, we would also give you 90 days that, hey, we need to change the, some stipulations of the contract, like staffing for a while or something like that. And I think the sheriff was open to having something like that in the contract, so.
I just know it wasn't mentioned tonight, and I think it's important for the council to hear that.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. I did speak to Sheriff Horch earlier today, and he did mention that, that as part of that cooperative agreement, that there would be clauses in that contract that would allow both sides to have some negotiation and some legal room when it came to services provided.
And if we said we need police next week, how soon could you fulfill two officers and a sergeant?
So next week might be a push. Only because it's a holiday. It's my story, and I'm going to stick to it. Realistically, if we were to find a process that worked for the City of La Center, we could look at the first-stage deployment, which would be the sergeant and the support service member, probably as early as this fall, with the hope being that we could begin the deployment of our deputies starting in January. And again, subject to the negotiated contract and our available resources, in a beautiful, perfect world, I could foresee a six-month, six months from the first deployment of deputies, we would add our second deployment of deputies, and possibly six months later, our third deployment, so that by the end of 2024, you would have round-the-clock day swing and grave coverage.
Will officers get to bid on, if they get to work out here?
Oh, nice.
Okay, nice.
And from what I have heard, there's already talk about a lot of people really interested in coming out here, because there are quite a few people who have ties to this community, and, yeah, it would be a very valued spot.
Yeah, great. That's good to hear. That's great. Well, thank you for your presentation. It was great, very informative, all fancy with all your videos. It was nice.
Any other questions for the commander?
All right. Well, thank you again for your time. If you do have questions, as the sheriff mentioned in his speech, you're more than welcome to reach out to him. You can contact Chief McCabe or myself at any time. Thank you again.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, well, that concludes this work session. We will begin the regular city council meeting, that's 6:30. Thank you.